There's a lot there.
Hello. Hello and welcome to this regularly scheduled board meeting of the Edgewood City Schools Board of Education. Date is March the 26th and the time is 6:00 P.M. I'm sorry, March 25th and the date is 6:00 P.M. Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Here.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
President.
Mr. Gary Gabbard.
Present.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Here.
Okay, if you would please rise and let's join in on the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Tonight we have Mr. Tim Smith from the First Baptist Church here for prayer.
Let us pray. Father, we come tonight just to say thank you for this time together this evening. Father, we know this is a very important time, very important meeting tonight. Father, we ask that you give wisdom where it's needed. Father, we just pray that there would be a peace and a calm here tonight. Father, we just pray for our school board, we pray for our administration, we pray for our teachers, we pray for the parents. Father, most importantly, we pray for our students. Father, thank you for Edgewood City Schools. We ask your special blessings upon this district. Father, we pray you would meet all the financial needs, meet all the fiscal needs. Father, again, we just pray that your wisdom would be evident in the hearts and lives of those that are here tonight that are speaking. Father, we just pray that all that is said and done here would just honor and glorify you. So, Father, we love you and we just want to say thank you in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, the next item of business is the approval of the agenda for tonight. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler. Before we do that, I'd like to present to the board, I have the policy here on public participation. This is policy number PO-0169 dot one. Section K says the portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited shall be limited to thirty minutes unless extended by a vote of the board. We have fourteen community members who have signed up for public participation. I would like to propose to the board that we extend public participation to include all fourteen community members. It says thirty minutes, they're right, it doesn't say extend. Says thirty minutes, I'm asking that we extend this three minutes per person, all fourteen people that are signed up.
I think that, I mean, if you can't, it's probably gonna be pretty repetitive. I mean, I'm fine with it, but we're probably gonna hear the same ten things said over and over again, but that's fine.
So, we'll see, we'll see if anybody says anything different to one another.
Well, you wouldn't know if you didn't.
Well, okay. So, I'm looking for a motion to extend the time allotted for public participation to include all fourteen people that have signed up.
Second.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Mr. Gary Gabbard. Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll to approve the agenda as amended?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mission is five zero.
So, Mrs. Bowers, I understand we have presentations for tonight?
We do, we do. I'd like to invite Mr. Scott Clemens up to the podium and our students. He's gonna recognize our winter athletes and all their recognition, so welcome.
Mrs. Bowers, the board, thank you guys for giving us this opportunity tonight. They're just years ago, it was, you know, just very nice to bring some athletes back in after their season ends, just to let the community know, everybody knows just how successful these young people were this year in the winter sports. So first up, we have Jalen Berry. Jalen finished first team All Southwest Buckeye League, ombudsman, All Southwest District, Southwest Buckeye All-Star Game and finished with a 3.389 GPA for the winner. Second team All Southwest Buckeye, ombudsman, All Southwest District, Southwest Buckeye League All-Star Game, 3.606 GPA, second all-time in career three-point percentage in school history with thirty-eight percent. Second all, second all-time for most blocks in the season thirty-four and second all-time for most blocks in the game six with a 3.625 GPA. Girls' basketball, Riley Toman? First team All League, District Fifteen Senior Team, ombudsman, Southwest Ohio, selected to play District Fifteen All-Star Game and represent Ohio in Ohio versus Kentucky All-Star Game. Career record, second in all-time points with one thousand one hundred sixty points, first in all-time steals at three hundred and four, first in all-time assists, three hundred and forty-five, six, tight six for all-time for career threes made, ninety-one and a 3.272 GPA. Second team Southwest Buckeye, most threes in the season at fifty-seven and second most threes in the game six, which he accomplished twice this season with a 3.4 GPA. Bowling, Michael Moritz? Michael broke the scoring record with a 280 this season, was a district qualifier for the second time in his career, a 4.105 GPA. Wrestling, Wyatt Walker? First team Southwest Buckeye and Russell of the Year, district qualifier, sectional champion, state third place, district third place. He was the second, sorry, state place or fourth place, the second highest finish since Scott Fowler in nineteen eighty-two for Edgewood City Schools. All-time wins leader in Edgewood with one hundred and fifty-five, most consecutive pins record for the state championship and Wyatt did all that with a 3.9 GPA. This group did a great job, great leadership in this senior group for us. You guys are gonna be missed, look forward to those that are gonna be coming back to us. Mr. Reynolds is the only one. They all get that opportunity to graduate, we're very excited for their next career. We will have our next college signing on Wednesday, April seventeenth, and many of these people will be joining us.
It's amazing. Thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you, guys.
Tell you what, their academic ability was just as nice, that's very impressive. Thank you very much.
That's very impressive, a great group of very young people, that's awesome. Thank you, Scott. Okay, so the next item on the agenda for tonight is public participation. I do want to just kind of review some of the rules. It's limited to three minutes per person, that will be strictly enforced. And I just ask, I can go through all the rules, but I just ask, understand that there's a lot of very strong opinions on some of the things that are gonna be discussed tonight, that we be respectful of each other. The board, you can ask questions, or you can, you can say questions to the board if you like, but the board is not going to respond to any of those questions. That's part of our policy and we're planning to follow that. So, with that said, first person signed up for public participation is Mrs. Molly Broadwater. I will keep the time and I will give you a one-minute countdown as your time is ended. Please state your name and your address and any affiliations that you have.
This is Molly Broadwater, forty-three eighty Windy Meadows Drive. I'm a parent of three elementary school teachers and a two thousand one. Students, sorry, students, teachers, whatever. Students and alumni, two thousand one. My time start now, Mark?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I think we can all agree that the information shared at the March eleventh meeting was a lot to unpack. This is a heavy conversation, closing a building, shuffling around elementary students and staff again, is a conversation that deserves to be properly vetted and gives staff, students and community proper time to weigh in and adjust. After watching a March eleventh workshop, I wanted to address a few concerns I have with information presented. Regarding our master facility plan and discussions that occurred in twenty-twenty, unless the board voted behind closed doors or in an email, the candy in the board never finalized a new master facility plan in twenty-twenty. The conversation was started with hand-selected community members as well as one or two vocal community members that pushed their way into the conversation. However, after the school did a survey with the community that had been completed in a four-hour timeframe, the conversation halted, probably because our former superintendent read the comments in the open-ended questions and found that people did want to bond levy and wanted to keep May back in Seven Mile. I'll provide you the copy of those survey responses. I also want to address validity and reliability of the surveys and the results that were presented. It was stated that sixty-six percent of the staff agreed that we could save money for the closing of EEECC and would prefer the savings to go to staff and student program. No question was actually asked of the teachers that said they agreed they could save money closing EEECC. Instead, a question was asked whether we should go to the ballot and ask for additional funding, don't go to the ballot and reduce student programs, reconfigure the district and put additional funds towards students and staff, or none of the above. If you want to learn what the staff really think of this conversation, you need to read through the pages of comments. I'm not sure if any of those have been shared with you, but I do have a mini-email and am happy to forward them on to you. Between the open-ended question answers as well as the Google Docs from the building with the many concerns that elementary school staff have poured their hearts into over the past month, what you see is that the teachers are open to reconfiguring schools but not the way the district presented. They want to configure them back into community schools where they feel they have less discipline issues, better academics and a real sense of community where they could really get to know students and families and make a lasting impact. I have the same concerns with the validity and reliability of data coming from the parent surveys as the questions are very biased. As we look to gather information from staff, parents and the community, we should look to obtain reliable and valid data and should engage on the experts in surveys and conduct and research. A factual statement was made at the March eleventh meeting that the levy was down, but why? That's research that should be done. We have more development going on in the district, yet more families are opting to seek out other educational opportunities. It's easy to say anxiety issues, but if you dive deeper into those results, the answer remains the district wasn't meeting their needs. We need to figure out how to meet the needs and tie them back instead of making additional changes that will drive more families away. We all understand we have empty classrooms on Busenbar, but they aren't the right empty classrooms that benefit our elementary students. The board asks when we will be safe and secure, staff and student focused, academic focused, and do we have enough rooms for tier one, tier two and tier three instruction? Would it promote collaboration and would it be fiscally responsible? Watching a meeting, I don't believe any of these questions were answered. You would also have asked about what would cause the least amount of disruption.
Two seconds.
What is being proposed is moving all elementary school students pre-K through five. Some of these students, my second grader included, would switch buildings four times in five years because of this move. This would pack staff and students that had just been shuffled around three years ago to change that's never been evaluated to see if it actually saved money or benefited students.
Time is up, it's pro bar.
No problem. I do have handouts for each of you.
Thank you. Next person is Jeff Hamie, I can't, I'm not sure I can. Yes, sir, Jeff Hamie. I'm gonna give you these ahead of time because they may help you a bit. Do we pass those around? And you're ready to begin. Yes, sir, give me just a second. Okay, sir, you can start whenever you're ready.
Board members, treasurer, superintendent, I thank you for your, for the service to the district. As you all know, our district faces significant challenges and now and in the coming years. I believe none are more central to, none are more central to our stability and growth than improving our academic performance. The past year, five years have seen our district drop from a respectable forty-seventh percentile to a dismal twenty-two, twenty-second percentile. Obviously, we have done something wrong in this most important responsibilities. Page one of the provided document is a comparison of similar districts as designated by the state. The sheet shows that we are ranked eighteenth of the twenty-one similar districts. Further, it shows our benefits averaging almost four percent more for operating expense. I think it's reasonable to assume the transfer of so many students to other districts is due primarily to academic performance, although I suspect it is also impacted by closing and repurposing local elementary schools and busing young students to facilities that are no longer close to their homes. Fortunately, families demand better for their kids, but twenty-second percentile is just not good enough. I expect the exercise will continue until we can fix performance. There are some relatively simple steps we can take to improve performance. Shorten the bus rides for grades one through five. These young kids are difficult to work with when they're tired. Keep the amount of elementary schools serving local families. It keeps everybody's happier, it improves performance and it helps when levy time comes around. Eliminate the disparity in benefits between teachers and administrators. Hopefully, in helping to improve teacher morale and eliminate at least some of the us and them mentality that, and the two groups must work together. If you look at page two of the printed documents.
One minute remains.
It provides you a summary of the disparities taken from the administrative contracts renewed in January twenty twenty-four. Administrators receive a hundred percent paid coverage of health, dental and vision. Teachers receive eighty-five percent. Administrators receive an average of thirty-two hundred in their health savings contributions. Teachers get a two thousand dollar contribution. Additional disparities remain are also in retirement and life insurance. I find it easier for teachers to take this as not being appreciated by the administration. Page three of the document presents an estimate detail of how equalization of administrator benefits to the teacher standard would save the district an estimated one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars per year once all twenty-eight administrators are.
Ten seconds.
Reduced to the teacher standards. Thank you. Please don't hesitate to contact me with comments, questions or anything else.
Thank you, sir. The next person we have for public participation is Mr. Bill Jones.
Thank you, Edgewood Board. My name is Bill Jones. My address is thirty-two zero six Trenton Oxford Road. Not only am I a Wayne Township resident, I'm also a grandparent of a child in the school system. I'm the Wayne Township trustee and I work for the city of Trenton. All of these positions are covered by your school system. I'd like to talk to you tonight about transparency and trust. School does a very, very good job of notifying parents and/or kids who are in the school system of problems coming up, texts, emails, phone calls. We get them a bunch of. It could be a snow day, it could be a bustle day, it could be a sports, it could be whatever. The problem that I have is you have that available to you, but since this February meeting with Mr. Pressler dropped this bomb on everybody about closing his school, not one word was sent to every child's parents in the school system that you're trying to close down one of our schools. It's very important that little Billy over four hundred or three hundred are holding, but not closing our school. That'll work until you send out the March eleventh agenda. You could at least send that out and at least let the people know what's coming up. You wonder why people don't trust the board and the administration. There's a good reason right there. Your special meeting was scheduled two weeks prior to tonight where a vote was going to be taken on closing Seven Mile School. In my opinion, through Mr. Andrew Pressler, you're reckless, you're unprofessional and is irresponsible to pursue a closing of one of our buildings in less than a month. It seems like what's happening is you're trying to address your own private agenda for that school because in your claims, when you were running, you wanted to keep things going, you wanted to keep things local, you wanted to do this, and you're doing the opposite. You're trying to do this quickly so nobody has.
Where's this information you're coming from?
Don't interrupt.
Well, you're not supposed to call out individual board members and tell them.
But it's fine, it's fine.
It's fine. I'm sorry. Why did you try to close this school in a month?
You're down to thirty seconds, Mr. Jones.
Well, if there's me, you want to go on the radar, close this school before anybody found out about it. It's the only reason I can understand. And if anybody on this board tonight votes to close the school down tonight, I think all of you would be considered irresponsible and reckless.
Ten seconds.
This takes time, like Kelly said. This takes time. You need community involvement and not just a really quick vote, try to close down the school.
Time is up. Next that we have on the agenda for tonight is Ms. Carleen Jaeger.
I'm Carleen Jaeger.
Ms. Jaeger, just, so just, just to reiterate the rules, like I said, it's, it's in the rules that you can't call us out individually as a board member. So, let's, like I said, let's just try to keep this respectful, understand that this is, this is a hot topic with a lot of votes and we're here to listen, we've extended it to give everybody an opportunity, so please just keep it, let's keep it respectful. Ms. Jaeger, you may start whenever you're ready.
Carleen Jaeger, forty-three fifty-one West Austin Road. I'm here tonight to speak for my concerns for the elementary children and staff of the Edgewood School this year. When the decision was made to redistrict the elementary school students several years ago, I came to the board meeting and I told the superintendent, the then superintendent and the board members that any future levy would fail if they continued with the redistricting plans. I know this community and I know how people think. You always have voters that will always say no, you always have voters that will always say yes, but you need the votes, voters that are in between, the ones that are angry because something happened that they weren't unhappy with. The levy failed and it failed district-wide. It did not fail, it did fail in the north, east, south and west. Those who cared enough to vote showed up and told you they were not happy with the decision of the Board of Education. When we show up at board meetings, our voice, we voice our concerns and we were met with no response, as we all know. Our only choice left is at the ballot box. That's where we tell you how we feel. This was not a vote against the students, this was a vote against the board's decision. There was no organized opposition to this levy and it failed by majority of the votes. The recent loss of the levy did not show a divided district, it showed a whole district that came together with a majority of voters that said, no, we either can't afford this additional cost or and we did not approve of the redistricting that took place. The levy agenda did not offer any benefits to the youngest of our students. The only game plan that was, that was left known to the community was what would be heard if it didn't pass. I'm here tonight to tell you, if you do not listen to the community and the teaching staff, you will continue to lose at the ballot box. You need us for funding to continue to operate the buildings and the commu, and the school at the level of your children.
One minute remains.
We want the district to return to the community elementary buildings that work for the students, families and teachers. We do not want our youngest students bussed across the district and going through their early education experience as a factory school. As an idea to keep Seven Mile open, we understand the option of a virtual academy. We were willing to pay the money to redo that. Why not put the money back to elementary school? If you have the funds, do it. The history of this district is in nineteen eighties, they wanted to close Wayne, they, the redistricting took place, the communities voted down levy after levy. It wasn't until they made the plan to have all three elementaries, a middle school and a high school, that you got a levy passed. When they came to it.
Two seconds for me.
When they came to us and said they wanted a new high school, we said no, until they gave us what we wanted. And that's when you pass a levy. I have here for you voting information. It's from the websites and that's for all of you. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda for tonight is Mrs. Alexis Zeller. Please state your name and your address.
Alexis Zeller, sixty-eight hundred Landtrace Road, I'm a parent of three in the district.
Okay, your time starts now.
I volunteer to use a portion of my time to share some concerns from the district staff related to the proposal of shutting down EEECC and shuffling elementary grades up to the second time in four years. Those include, why is there such an urgency to have this decision made now? Why hasn't the board put forth effort to examine what benefits there are, if any, to redistricting once again? Why does it seem it's always the youngest students that are affected when these changes are made? If changes are to be made, please consider reducing the number of transitions for our elementary age students. The staff didn't see any quote savings from the last move, why should anyone believe they would benefit from any savings from this move? Please consider the preschools should be closed to the nurse's office for medical issues, closed being a few doors down and not a several-minute walk. The further are my own concerns. I want to talk about the discussion on budget. In May twenty twenty-three, a one percent income tax levy was placed on the ballot. At the time, the board claimed that passing the levy would solve nearly all of the financial strain based on our five-year forecast. Based on calculations from the twenty twenty-two U.S. Census Bureau data, that levy would have resulted in approximately three point eight million dollars in additional annual revenue for the district after accounting for those who are in fixed incomes and below the poverty line. Fast forward to now, increased property taxes will give the district an additional three point two million dollars in annual revenue, per the Butler County Auditor, Butler County Auditor's Office. However, at the March eleventh work session, it was noted that three point two million is only three months of payroll, it's not that much. I would venture to say if you told anyone in the audience tonight that they would be receiving three additional months of their salary for doing absolutely no different work than they've been doing, I doubt any of their responses would be only three months' worth. That blanket response to over three million dollars in funding, which is roughly eight percent of your forty million dollar annual budget, does not sit well with me or your community. Also, at that work session, it was alluded to that state funding for the district will be decreasing. However, according to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforces State Foundation formula projections, the district state funding will increase by five point five percent between now and fiscal year twenty-five, which equates to just over one million dollars in additional funding. We all understand the impacts of inflation and mindful spending, but the stance of we just don't have enough money to make it work is feeling a little hard to digest when looking at the actual numbers.
One minute remains.
I'm a parent of three kids in the district, all elementary age, born less than five years apart and never have attended any, attended school in the same building. My oldest is nine years old, he's switched buildings four times already and is in fourth grade. Before anyone accuses me of only thinking of my own children, let me be clear, regardless of the decisions made, I'll make sure my kids are okay. To be honest, they've been moved around so many times, they don't know it can be any different. But just because mine will all be okay doesn't mean all kids will be as minimally affected. Kids who struggle with anxiety and adapting to changes, kids who need significant support, kids with special needs, whether learning, emotional or behavioral based, or kids from whom school is the most stable and constant environment they have in life, they're more at risk. It's not developmentally appropriate or in my opinion fair to keep shuffling small kids around without a clear, long-term plan and realistic examination of the lasting impacts these changes have on them, neither of which have been clear from any proposals shared thus far with the community.
Ten seconds.
If you want to take action that supports both fiscal sovereignty and educational outcomes of the entire district, look into the feasibility of reinstating community elementary schools, not just in Seven Mile but for Trenton too.
The next person that we have on the list signed up for public participation is Mr. Laura Askill. Approach the podium, please. Please state your name and address.
Hi. I used to be camp director, I'm pretty sure I can talk about it. Good evening, my name is Laura Askill. I live two oh eight South Mill Street, Seven Mile, and I'm here as a parent and a resident and also representing our council members of the village of Seven Mile. So, good evening. We would like to start off by expressing our appreciation in advance for your time, attention and services to our elected school board members. My husband and I are one of the examples of people that actually purchased a house because of this location close to a very small community school in Seven Mile, so it actually does happen. We had the privilege to walk our daughter to school and we were also very, very involved in the classroom throughout her years here at Edgewood. It seems like yesterday, when residents attended multiple community and school board meetings to save our local school in Seven Mile, here we are doing it again. Thankfully, that board's decision allowed us to keep some of our kids in the school and therefore continue to keep Seven Mile an important part of the school district. However, our young children had to be transported from the west side to the east side, which made for very long eight-hour days, which is difficult when you're six years old. Having our second to fifth graders in Seven Mile Elementary under the guidance of the wonderful Principal Harrison worked very well for the school district. In fact, so well that we received the Hall of Fame School Award from the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators. There were one out of nine schools in the entire state of Ohio that received this award. Kudos, Mrs. Harrison. How did the school district celebrate? Well, our board at that time removed our students and staff out of Seven Mile Elementary with a very fast, knee-jerk redistricting without the appropriate public and staff input guidance. So, instead of incorporating the high results and positive outcomes from Seven Mile Elementary into our other schools, the board decided to completely. the board decided to completely flip the grades and the staff around. How is that supposed to unite our communities together to continue to support the school district? Data proves that school closures have many negative impacts, and most we notice. Children being transported to schools far away from their homes, crowded rooms, when the attendance rebounds, which it will, and you know, compounded traffic problems, which was another low issue, and lower educational outcomes. Final result, failure to pass our levies. On the other hand, schools with community support have higher educational outcomes and much better chance of passing our levies.
One minute remains.
Our community should not be compromised. The school is important for the economy of the Village of Seven Mile. We want action that strengthens our school district, not weakens it. Parents want to keep their kids in town, close to home, especially our little, our wee little ones. We implore you to move forward thinking and consider the long-term effects of school closures rather than just focusing on the short-term bottom line. Take the time, gather the information that we need. Unfortunately, as you know, our past levy failed across the school district. For the next one to pass, it will take a united front. Keeping our Edgewood City School District children in the Seven Mile building is a way to show us in Seven Mile and the surrounding west-side communities that we are not compromised, but we are part of the school district. This is not only for our community, for our surrounding families, and most important, for our children. Three minutes.
You actually had about five seconds. The next person we have signed up for tonight is Paul Fisher. Please approach this podium. Sir, state your name and your address and your affiliations.
Paul Fisher, three thousand five Hamilton Eaton Road. I've got one great-grandchild in the school district. I'm here because we have a family business and I knew a lot of the old timers when the schools got together. They always told me three things to remember. The first one was the first proposed site of the new school was Route Seventy-three and Jacksonburg Road, which they wanted to adapt that far so it could never be incorporated into any town. Second thing they wanted me to know that the Shiloh School District had no debts. All the monies that they had collected and had went into treasury of new, of the new school district. And the third thing, after all the negotiations and everything, there's supposed to be a gentleman's agreement that there always be a building open in the Shiloh School District. That's why they rebuilt the Seven Mile Building. And I, I was, I worked for Edgewood for fifteen years in the building maintenance. I was in when Bloomfield closed. That was sort of a fiasco. You know, they packed the building, the other buildings, filled all the rooms, all the special education, went in the hallways and any cubby hole they could find. The art and music was out in the back building at Seven Mile. I would like to see it go back to the community because I think that young ones getting started need to be in a smaller school. I think it's scaring the death to walk in a building with a thousand fifteen hundred kids. And that's why I would like to see it go back to what it was a few years ago. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir. The next person we have signed up is Sarah Starkey Smith. Please approach the podium. Please state your name, address, and your affiliations.
Hi, good evening. My name's Sarah Starkey Smith, I live at three zero one West Ritter Street in Seven Mile. And I'm Edgewood alumni and I have two children in the district. My family and I moved to this school district last year. I am thrilled to have my children at Edgewood, where I went to school. As a bonus, we were able to find a house that we love right near the Seven Mile School, Edgewood Early Childhood Center, knowing that we would get to enjoy the benefit of walking our youngest to school for the years he'd be able to attend. We started preschool at EECC this year and we love it, both for the staff and the location. He's thriving there. And he excitedly announces that it's his school every time we walk outside, even when we take the dogs out before bed. However, that is shadowed by the prospect that the district is considering the closure of the Seven Mile campus. As a parent of a child enrolled at EECC, I'm surprised in the district that the request for confirmation of continued enrollment did not have any mention that the enrollment in question may not be at a location that we love so much and find so convenient. As a parent who recently moved her children to the district, I'm incredibly dissatisfied with the proposal to close the campus, especially the distance to the school was a major factor to consider when choosing our home. I've spoken to other parents in a similar situation who echo this dissatisfaction and who are also saddened by the substantial loss that it would be to Seven Mile, to the Seven Mile side of the district if the decision is made not to hold on to this building for our families. I sincerely hope that in addition to bearing in mind the children who call EECC their school and who are not yet ready to understand why they would have to go elsewhere and it were a long bus ride, that you also weigh the point of view of parents who've made huge financial decisions such as a home purchase within this school district.
One minute remains.
Based on having the Seven Mile School as the place where our little ones can start their school years. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Emily Combs. Please approach the podium, state your name, your address, and your affiliations.
My name is Emily Combs, I live at three seven seven fourteen Road in Wayne Township, and I have four children in the school district, grades kindergarten to sixth grade. While I have many of my own concerns that I could address today, today I'm choosing to speak on behalf of our teachers and share some of their direct concerns and comments. The staff want to know what the ultimate goal is. Is it to have all the students at Boozabark? If so, we need to wait for a plan. There is no reason to make another quick decision, slap a bandaid on a program, if we're not addressing the end goal. Moving into buildings for two to three short years will cause more chaos, more distrust, distrust within the community and frustration among the teachers. A very big concern is not thinking ahead for the growth of our student enrollment. Where are we going to put the students when we max out capacity of our buildings? It is, it is beneficial to have extra space in our buildings for small group learning, science experiments, reading groups, and specific interventions students need. We have lost a great deal of community that we once highlighted in our district. With just three grade levels at EIS, there are too many students to get to know them, to make connections with their families and with them. Students and families have gone from being names to just numbers. We need a sense of community to reach all of these students. Smaller community schools would solve so many of our current problems. Community schools are important. There is a large disconnect currently between buildings. It takes us about half a year to truly get to know the students and decide who actually needs the help and what is, and what it is. In a smaller group, teachers can have face-to-face conversations with previous teachers to determine academic and social needs. Smaller schools have poor kids fall through the cracks. Preschool needs to be in a building that has appropriate certificates for licensing. There need to be restrooms equipped with changing tables for those kids that need to be changed. And these restrooms need to be close to their classrooms, not down the hall. Preschool classrooms need to be, be near therapy rooms. A long walk for these kiddos impact their therapy time and their participation, which affect their success. EIS was built to service fifth through eighth grade. Is it really conducive to serve smaller children in, in preschool through third grade? Consider the restrooms, the playground, the cafeteria service line, et cetera.
One minute remains.
More students at EIS means more time for them to get through the lunch line, which in turn means starting lunch earlier and ending it later. This causes students to be more focused on their hunger and less focused on their learning. Having younger grades at EIS will cause many traffic issues. Parents are more likely to drop off and pick up their younger kids. The township, county, and state should weigh in and traffic studies should be completed prior to any movement. Having more grade levels in a building will mean, will mean fewer available classrooms. This could potentially cause special teachers to lose their classrooms and travel on a cart, which is extremely detrimental to student learning and makes it hard to meet Ohio standards on music education.
Ten seconds.
EPS classrooms are considerably smaller than current classrooms. While it may work on paper, are the classrooms really big enough to support our twenty-six-plus upper elementary students? EPS also has no lockers, so think about the storage option and plan for the students' belongings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next signed up for public participation is Doug Hyland. Please approach the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, Doug Hyland, I live at sixty-four zero one Wayne Trace Road, Somerville, Ohio. I have both three kids that currently are going or will be going, I have a fourth grader and a preschooler, and I have a three-year-old that will be attending Edgewood. I also work in the district as a teacher, as many of you know. And I'm speaking on both as a community member and as a teacher. I would like to address, like, I would love to see Seven Mile building open or the, or Edgewood Early Childhood Center, I guess as we call it. I would like to see it back how it was as a community school. I feel that's best for the kids. As a teacher, I worked in Seven Mile my first five years when it was that building. I've worked in Bayback when it was a community school. Community schools are great, I think it helps with attendance, helps with academics. It's what's best for the kids. I mean, you look at other districts around, almost all districts around have some type of community schools for their elementary kids. I don't know of any other ones that have just a kindergarten building or just a one, two, long bus rides and whatnot. Like, I feel we could save a lot of money if we look into the busing as well. The transportation costs, busing kids, long bus rides, three different buildings, shuttle buses going back and forth. I live in the side of the district where my kids, when they ride the bus, it's a really long ride. They, they go to two, three buildings as proposed, like, I feel like there could be a big call station right there by doing a community school. Some of the community that lives closer to, say, Bayback or Seven Mile could walk their kids to school, like some people I mentioned. I just feel that it's better, we should have what's best for the kids. We could save money with the busing. The teachers that I work with, a lot of them, they would love the community schools. I can't speak for all, but a lot of them have come up to me and said, we loved our days when we used to have Bloomfield when it was community school, Bayback was community school, Seven Mile was community school. We got three elementary buildings, we might be with some modifications, we could probably make all three of them make the current Edgewood intermediate school like Bloomfield used to be K-five, make Seven Mile K-five, make Bayback K-five. And I think the community would love it, both Trenton and Seven Mile, it's not just a Seven Mile issue or just a Trenton issue, it would benefit everybody. What parent wouldn't want to go to one building, they could attend conferences for kindergarten through fifth, add preschool with each building as well. Like, couple preschools home and that works, like, it'll be good for the parents, good for conferences, good for community events. I mean, right now, if you have to pick up a kid, you have one at kindergarten or a secondary, third grade, you gotta have three buildings to pick up all your kids if you have to go somewhere, like, I, I love, parents would love it, the teachers would love it.
One minute remains.
I think community schools is a proven winner and it should be looked into. Like, we should truly have input in all our surveys where usually not ask these questions of what teachers would like K-five buildings, what community members would like K-five, like, throw that out there in the surveys. Like, I think it would be a, a good, good response on that, so. Again, like, I think there's call stations with the transportation and community schools are a proven winner. I, like I said, a lot of the teachers would, would love community schools, like, that was the best years of their teaching except when they had Bloomfield or Bayback or Seven Mile. But me personally, I loved it too. Because you see, you see the kids grow from grade level to grade level, get that vertical alignment that you don't get, right, the way it is, so. Thank you.
Next is Vivian Gorsuch. Please approach the podium, state your name and your address and affiliations.
Vivian Gorsuch, one thirteen South Main Street, Seven Mile, Ohio. I, my family moved to Edgewood District in nineteen seventy-six. My sister and brother both went to Edgewood, as well as my children and my grandchildren went to Edgewood. They're very successful people, I'm very proud of them. I'm here as a taxpayer, I retired as mayor in two thousand and four, I became mayor. In two thousand and five, I got invited to the committees that talked about the long-term planning that Edgewood was created. I've been on every committee since then, until just recently, I retired two years ago. The long-term planning, the people that were in first grade at that time, they now have children in Edgewood District. The long-term plan that was created in two thousand and five is outdated. The world has changed, the culture's changed, people's needs have changed, and it's going to change even faster in the next few years with AI coming in. There's many more plans and things coming in that are going to change our world. And I'm sorry, I got shaky voice, I hurried to get here and I didn't hurry to think out. So the outdated plan needs to be updated. And I do believe at the last board meeting, the superintendent suggested to the board that you look at that plan. So I hope that you will do that. Number two is uses for the building. The building was built and, or remodeled in nineteen ninety-three, I believe it was. The gym is nineteen eighty-four. So there's still plenty of good use in that building, so I'm going to ask you not to vote to tear the building down. Please let that building continue to bring life to Seven Mile. There's many uses for it. As a matter of fact, one of the successful grandchildren that had graduated from Edgewood, she and I have been talking about the push by Governor Deloitte, she works in Columbus, for community build, or community schools, charter community schools. And I think that would be a perfect use for Seven Mile, if you don't want it anymore. It does need to be a K-through-five building. I believe that there is a school in Ratty, community school in Ratty, I've been doing a little research on it, and it would be a perfect opportunity to bring that to Seven Mile region. There's many uses for that building.
One minute remains.
Thank you. And please know that the OFCC, I've been studying on that, Quikly, I've been studying on that. The board has the power to give compelling reasons not to shut down Seven Mile. That's where the recommendation came from, excuse me, that's where the recommendation came from, the OFCC. You can give compelling reasons not to shut it down. The reasons were all given here, not redundant tonight. The reasons are given here to keep that K-through-five building. Then you will listen carefully. Listen carefully to what these people are saying. You're down four hundred students now, you wait, if you shut that school down, maybe someone I do. Thank you.
The next, the next person we have signed up is Dave Combs. Dave, please approach the podium. State your name, address, and your affiliations.
My name is Dave Combs, my address is forty-six sixty West Upden Road in Wayne Township. I also work for the city of Trenton and the village of Seven Mile, and my wife and I have five children in the district, from kindergarten to a junior. Our main concern is the closing of the functioning Seven Mile School Building, not knowing what the future holds, as this will limit what the district can do in the future and cause potential overcrowding, which is what my class dealt with when I attended school in the nineties. I would like those, if we don't learn from the past, we are doomed to repeat it. And I don't want to see my kids attending school in trailers, which I fear could be the only option to expand the district if Seven Mile is closed. I would like those in charge to rethink the redistricting.
And it was so nice because when I went to pick up that, my children, not that I got to do it very often, every single person, whether they had my child or not, knew who I was, knew who my child was. And when my child got left in that building because he was being a jerk, he did not get on the bus.
And when my child got left in that building because he was being a jerk and did not get on the bus, Mrs., I believe it was Mrs. Murphy, put him in her car. She called me first and said, Christopher missed the bus. Go figure. I said, call my neighbor, but I couldn't get ahold of the neighbor. She put him in his car and brought him home. And I felt totally comfortable with that because I knew who she was because my children went there all those years. So I would hope that you would keep this. I think it is a best practice to do community schools. It helps with the M G S S process. If you have a child that needs help, that's same for a multi-tiered support system. It helps with that. They get the help that they need and they have that consistency. And if anything I've learned as a thirty-five-year educator, children have to have consistency. It communicates, it communicates community within, when you're out in the public, consistency. That is the only way, we're gonna get these kids, all we care about is mental health. The only way we're gonna bounce back and get these kids to close their gap because of COVID and mental health is go back to a community school where those kids have grownups that they will see day in and day out for hopefully their kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade years. That's how you're going to get, look, that's what it was, back to the district that it was when I was here in the eighties and when Maurice Idle was here as superintendent and all of those people, Ron Cass. We have to get back and put some consistency back into our school history.
Okay, so that does it for public participation. Thank everyone who spoke tonight and appreciate everybody keeping things professional and appreciate the effort that you put into the discussion that you brought tonight. Thank you. So next item on the agenda for tonight is treasure items. Mr. Power.
Mr. Meerschmidt, I would like to make a motion to block items A, B, C, and D. It's all four, you need minutes from the last meetings.
Looking for a motion to block section five, line A, B, C, and D. Can I get a motion to approve that? Mr. Gary Gabber, can I get a second?
Second.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft, any discussion? Mrs. Power, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Gary Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Meerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the financial reports from February.
Looking for a motion to approve February twenty twenty-four financial reports. Mrs. Amy Ashcraft, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Mr. Gary Gabber, any discussion? I've got a question. It's just an observation. So I'm looking at enrollment, F Y twenty-three to F Y twenty-four. I'm just kinda, I follow the numbers from one column over to another. And based off of these numbers, it appears that eleventh grade going into twelfth grade next year, well, it's almost forty students. It just seems, that seems odd to me that we're looking at forty kids in there, senior year, a week.
Well, a lot of kids will graduate early. Let me get to the column where you're at. So from...
We got three hundred twenty-two juniors and we're projected to have two hundred eighty-four seniors.
Which column are you in?
I'm looking at F Y twenty-three, F Y twenty-four.
F Y twenty-three, eleventh grade, three twenty-two.
And then, and you follow it over, maybe twelfth grade and F Y twenty-four, that number's two eighty-four.
It's Doug's. What, is that an early graduation difference? Would we have that many students graduating, they're junior year?
Typically, seven twenty, I'm graduated early.
Do you know why there would be forty different?
I can research that, I can do that tomorrow.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on financial reports? Mrs. Power, would you call roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Meerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the A one sprinkler and systems integration quote.
So move. Mr. Gary Gabber, looking for a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler, any discussion? So Patty, I've looked at this about four times and I can't figure out how much this costs.
So, this is six-year. We actually brought them in and with them, we have you sent the alarm for some of this. We have gotten a lot better service, a lot better rates. So if you look at the very first one here, what I'm asking for is the six-year agreement. And by doing the six-year, there is a greater savings over time. So, for example, that first page there is the high school. And if you look down there, that is fifty-five ninety-six, or we can pay it in a quarterly installment for thirteen ninety-nine. Each building would have its own form there.
So that's what you, so that's what business, we do a six-year contract, it's fifty-six hundred dollars at the high school and then each one of these is a different, over a different building?
Different, yes.
So how much are we saving compared to the company that we were using before?
Mrs. Adams, do you know what our savings is?
So, this one's actually a little bit different. This, we currently use A one sprinkler. This is for all of our fire extinguishers and inspections, fire suppression, all of that, but they, they already do that. So this contract is up for renewal. The Cincinnati Alarm, they do our alarm monitoring and security monitoring. We are looking at maybe potentially making some changes there with A one sprinkler can also do that. So that's not what this is right now, we're still looking into that. This is a current inspection process. Like I said, they do all of our fire extinguishers. The benefit of doing the six-year is that some of those items are on six-year rotations and they monitor that and track all of that for us with all of our fire safety and protections.
Is there a savings to go that way?
There's, yeah, there is a savings, they do, there's a savings with the six-year plus. They could do ten percent off any service calls when they have to come out. So there is benefit to that. We don't have to do six-years, there's options on there, it's just it tells you how much it is for each year. But this is a company that we currently use.
And we have to have this fire suppression, we have to have the service.
Have we, have we got quotes from anybody else to just see if this is competitive? Is that, do, do we think that would be something that would be worth looking into?
Yeah, I think anytime anything's over, certainly, absolutely, we should get.
This just seems extremely expensive to me. So, I mean, I, I almost, I mean, are we, do we have to approve this tonight? Is this, are we under a time, can we, we have time to get another quote from another company?
Absolutely.
Is that for you guys, find a table on this?
How many years we use these people?
That's long, I mean, I, decades probably.
We've used them for a while. We have you sent an alarm for similar things. And I'm just gonna tell you the service that we get from A one is far superior than what we have used. They have a lot of technicians that are right here local. So when we have a problem, I mean, we've got somebody right here on Cranwood, we're not waiting for someone.
They come right out when we have an issue.
It was, yeah, it was, it was a company called Silco, we made the Cincinnati Alarm. This change to this company was made prior to me being in this school, but I do know that we've had them for a couple of years. It has changed over the last couple of years. Silco doesn't, I don't know that they even exist anymore, Cincinnati Alarm struggles. We've been trying to get ahold of them to come fix one of the doors in our buildings for three weeks and we can't get them to come out. So, you know, we do, when we call A one, they were there. We had an issue with middle school and they were there within twenty minutes to come talk us through it, so. But I'm happy to get more quotes if that's what you want me to do.
I'm good with it. Because, I mean, to me, that's, that's the annual price, right? And you can pay quarterly and so on. I think it's cheap, but also this is the industry at work and so, I don't know.
I think we moved, I think we moved to them because we wasn't happy with the service we got.
That's correct, that's impressive.
And I think there is some techs that work in our, that live in the area that's really beneficial to have these people around. I mean, I'm not sure if these people offer some of the services that Cincinnati Alarm is kind of fault-failing us on.
They do. It's a, it's a, it's a separate contrast, which is why, these are two separate items. We're, we're gonna hold off on the security and the alarm and the monitoring, we're looking into that. But the, yeah, this is a totally separate service. They have a couple of different things that they do.
So does it put the district out of this, this table so that additional data is brought to the board? Is there, does that jeopardize any work moving forward?
I would have to go back to them probably and get an updated quote, just because they, you know, they're typically good for thirty days and things like that. But I'm, I, I can do that, it's up to you.
I'm not an expert on this, but it just seems expensive to me. And if, if it's not a big deal to get an extra, another quote, I would like to at least have something to compare it to.
I think it's always good to get two or three quotes. And even if you go back to the card that you've always used, if they're slightly higher, they'll sometimes adjust their price to be, to be more competitive.
We're at a point where we need to save every dollar we can, so I think we should table this.
You need a motion, it sounds like you have a motion to table.
So, looking for a motion to table this until we get another quote. So move, Mr. Gary Gabber?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler? Mrs. Power, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Gary Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Meerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the balloon quote. This is for projectors at the high school. We can get fourteen quotes on this. We do have fourteen quotes for recommending balloons.
Looking for a motion to approve the balloon quote for projectors at the high school. Mr. Andrew Pressler, looking for a second?
Second.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft, any discussion?
I think this is expensive.
Yeah, I think so too. But if you got fourteen quotes.
To replace the projectors. They have a shelf life, basically, so you have to go through and replace them after so many years.
So we, like, do we have projectors that are still good?
Correct. So this is just to replace those that need to be replaced.
So this isn't everyone, it's just correct?
Correct. Is that correct?
Can you speak?
So the high school, they were all put in when the building was built, which was, I don't know, two thousand ten, twelve, it's, we're in that re-invasion. Those are all, like, we get a lot of calls about how thin they are nowadays. We just have to replace all the active classrooms in the high school. So it's not enough to do every single room, it's just all the active classrooms.
Just out of curiosity, what were some of the other quotes?
Uh, I looked at everything from flat panel T Vs that are interactive to other brand projectors. I thought maybe the flat, I talked to some teachers and the disadvantage with the flat panel TVs is you lose the whiteboard space that you would have with the projector off. And that's kind of a deal breaker. Some people don't even use their projector, they just lose a part of their whiteboard. Plus, these have the advantage of already, they work with our current mounting that we already have up. So you just take the old projector down and put the new one up. We wouldn't have to purchase any additional mounting hardware, which can run anywhere from a hundred to two hundred dollars depending on what brand we went with, so. We look for cheaper stuff and different options, but this seemed to make no sense.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Meerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item, I'd like to ask for a motion to extend our Swoka contract. This is for internet services.
Looking for a motion to approve the Swoka contract for internet services to the district. So move. Mr. Gary Gabber, looking for a second?
Second.
Mr. Andrew Pressler, any discussion? So I guess you're assuming I'm gonna ask, is there, is this competitive?
No, this is actually cheaper than our current internet service. This is a voluntary extension contract, we already have this Swoka. So this is already something we pay. We're actually gonna get two gigabytes per second versus one, so we're actually getting a speed increase for a little less money per year. This is all E-rated, so we get an eighty percent discount as a district on this bill.
So we're confident this is a really good deal for us?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm relatively confident.
Well, I'm not a computer guy, so I'm gonna take it at your word. Any more discussion? All right, Mrs. Power, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Gary Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Meerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is the Butler County Head Start lease.
Looking for a motion to approve the Butler County Head Start lease.
Second.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft, I'm looking for a second?
Second.
Mr. Gary Gabber, any discussion?
This, they have changed the internal, that's right?
No.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Power, would you call roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Meerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is two contracts for surrogate parents, one is for the remainder of this fiscal year, and next is for next fiscal year.
Looking for a motion to approve contracts for surrogate parents through the end of F Y twenty-five.
So move. Second.
Mr. Gary Gabber was first, Mrs. Amy was second. Any discussion?
This is just a master contract, right? We don't have a current surrogate.
Yes, we didn't need this early on in the year. It's just recent that we have needed someone. I think our cost right now is twenty-five dollars. This just puts it in place so that we can call her if we need her. She'll be under like a ten ninety-nine, not hired on our payroll, but just in the event that we need her.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Power, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Gary Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Meerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the donations as presented.
Looking for a motion to approve the donations in the sum of four hundred dollars for the Greenberg Electric, five hundred dollars from the Trenton Moose, five hundred dollars from the First Rate Inspections, and a hundred dollar donation from an anonymous donor. Mr. Michael Pressler, can I get a second?
Second.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft, any discussion? For any of you that were involved in these donations, we thank you very much. Mrs. Power, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Meerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is just a national items from the treasure. I just put a document out there, a recommendation from audit that we just wrapped up. Just as it relates to our public records policy, I did have to provide them my four-hour training certificate, but they also asked that I sign that document just for my purposes. I just wanted to share about the, that's all I have.
So is there gonna be any discussion on the audit at any point? Are we gonna review that at a board meeting, anything that was found or discussed or?
We can, it's not in the agenda.
Was there anything, is there anything that's found or?
Just, there was a mention, like, two mentions in there, but there was no on hand.
Can we just add something about that to the next, next board meeting? Okay. So at this point, it looks like we're moving into item number six on the agenda, which is superintendent items.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to propose, I'm looking for approval of item six A for field trips as present. Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to propose, looking for approval of item six A for field trips as presented. Three of them are funded, facilitated by Butler Tech. The fourth is from high school, our AP biology class. There is a slight cost on the district for that field trip as presented.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the four field trips as presented.
So move.
Mr. Gary Gabbard, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft. So the, I believe the AP biology is the one that has the cost associated with it. And how much is that?
It's less than two thousand for transportation, is what the document says.
And we've done this in the past?
That's what I understand.
This is an annual thing?
That's what I understand.
Any discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Like to propose blocking items six B and C. These are for review, first readings of board policies as presented and the athletic handbook. According to Mr. Clemens, the handbook has been updated to align to school policies.
That's a mouthful. So I'm looking for a motion. Oh, we don't need to vote on this. So this is, okay.
Just information for review. If I want to review on those, we will vote next week.
Okay.
Next item, which is an action item, we will see calendars attached. There is a revision for twenty-four, twenty-five to reflect three early dismissals on exam days in May so that pre-K eight can get together on some vertical alignment data. I'm understanding that very little time is given for support of academic needs. For instance, students going from kindergarten to first grade that may be at risk. We need to sit down and communicate what's worked, not worked with staff. And fifth to sixth as well as eighth to ninth. So we want to build in some reading time for our staff. So that's a revision for this year. And next year's calendar has been approved from our teacher association and we're looking for approval as presented from the board.
Just a question on that. Well, so we get a motion, so looking for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendars.
Seven.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler. Any discussion?
So the one, the twenty-five, twenty-six, the teachers have already voted on this already?
Yes.
I'm just curious why? It looks like spring break's falling later next year than in the past. Is there a reason why we did that?
Usually around Easter time.
It's actually second week of April. Third week of April.
Is that Easter?
I don't believe so. That is Easter, okay.
So basically, by contract, the teachers propose a calendar to us and review it and we present it to the board. So this is what they're suggesting.
Okay. Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Do you want to mention this one?
So, so we've got, under superintendent items, item E and item F. Item E is the closure of the Edgewood Early Childhood Center, otherwise known as Seven Mile. And item F appears that it's a recommendation from?
Superintendent.
A superintendent.
And that recommendation is working with the Ohio Facility Commission, staff, parents, the community to define opportunities for cost savings included, but not limited to the use of the early ed- the EECC, formerly Seven Mile Elementary Building. So we can continue to look at cost savings, but work with the community on how we can best serve them and meet the needs of our students.
So the board was, the board asked to put the closure of EECC on the agenda for a vote in March, which is, is that what we asked?
I didn't ask.
That is not, that's what I'm wondering, but it was open for discussion. We talked, we can actually talk about it, but, no. That's what I'm wondering where all this, I mean, you go back and watch, go back and watch the last couple of meetings. We're looking for cost savings, and that was to include a possible repurposing, what, we were open to whatever. If you go back and you watch, it was never said, and, and how can you make a decision before having a, we had our special meeting to come in and discuss and look at all the facts, okay? How can you make a decision and devote on something before you have all the facts? That's why I was asking, where is this information coming from? Because if you don't watch meetings.
I think I would just ask for a motion to support that.
And I wouldn't support anything of the superintendent. We got, we got to get a motion and a second to discuss anything. So I'm looking for a motion to close the Edgewood Early Childhood Center, otherwise known as Seven Mile.
Don't kick the can down the road now.
So if we have no motion, I'm assuming that kills this agenda item?
Yep.
Yep.
So.
So the next item is a proposal, action item for superintendent to work with the committees presented in a process. And we can make a recommendation prior to the twenty-five opening. I've put together a calendar of events. I've already worked with principals on identifying some key players. And we will begin, I'll put together a year-long action step, basically, and when OFCC will come in, when we're meeting with parents, what questions we want to ask and, and study. Several were presented this evening, but I would like the committee to get established first. But that's, that's my recommendation. Let's study this for a year.
So do you want to vote on this? Is that what you're?
Yep.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the superintendent working with OFCC, staff, parents, community engagement committee to define opportunities for cost savings, including, but not limited to, the use of the Early Education Childhood Center, formerly known as Seven Mile Elementary. So I'm going to, Mr. Andrew Pressler, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft. Any discussion?
Well, I would like to, um, so I agree, I don't, I think, I think it was Molly that said the questions on the surveys. I agree. I think, I don't know how to get better questions on those surveys, but I think you need.
Might need to work with a company initially, okay, with research company to develop those questions. And we'll pass the money, but that's okay, we'll get valid data.
So thi- this is basically, we're working towards a second recommendation from you on what this actually would look like. And it could include, it can include really that it's kind of like a checkbook on what you need to do.
I think that, I think that's, that's going to depend on where it goes for the community. Absolutely. And I'd like to bring in the Ohio School Facility Commission, or at least our architect firm, and walk us through where we've been. This is the first I heard tonight that the community did not vote on her OFCC plan. I mean, I've never worked in a district where that wasn't part of the community. So we need to start.
So would it be appropriate, Kelly, to amend this to say, to basically work on a long-term facilities plan for the district?
Yes, yes, yes.
Absolutely. That's what it does involve, but, but we're also looking at cost savings with enrollment. If enrollment's decreased and we need to look at cost savings, we can do that. But again, that proposal will come from our community committee.
Okay. Okay, so we've, we've got a first and a second motion. Any more discussion on any of this? Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll please?
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Just having so much fun tonight. Let's see, the next piece is just the update. So just want to fill the board in. As we talked about levies this evening, I did receive information from the Buckeye Association of School Administrators from across, obviously, Ohio. With the most recent levies on the ballot, only nineteen percent of the levies that were asking for new money across the state of Ohio passed. Twenty-five out of thirty-three districts, which was seventy-six percent, did pass renewals on the ballots in Ohio. And operating levies, fifty-seven percent passed in the state of Ohio. I always like to look at those studies just to see where, where those statistics are falling. We all know this is a hard time to go to the ballot, and certainly districts asking for new money, it's not looking good at all. So just wanted to share that as far as statistics across the state. Also, wanted to bring the board up to date. Alicia Beckett and our teacher union have been working on supplemental contracts and looking at, you know, we spend about six hundred thousand, a little north of six hundred thousand a year on supplemental contracts. Also, past practice has been, anytime there's been a new club or sport generated, they will work and pilot the program for about three years and then bring it forward if participation is valid. And we're seeing good, good results there as far as participation. However, I also know when we do not have additional funding, in order to move those forward, I kind of challenge the committee, well, what's on this list that maybe the participation's less than expected? And we need to look at, should any of those fall off in order to bring the more popular on? So we're having those discussions right now. I'll keep you abreast of where that goes. But something came up in regard to when fine arts teachers were let go in the past, we offered an art club, yet at the middle school, remember this conversation? And so when I've been in some staff meetings, I'm hearing, how come we were told we can have an art club, yet when we asked, there's no funding? So I just want to get some stronger language. If it's in the contract, I would think that is representing what we're funding. And if we're not funding it, we need to look at what we're cleaning up in that language so that it's not a guess as to who's getting funded or not when it comes to some of those lower participation clubs, not necessarily sports. So, if that makes sense. So rather than adding new dollars to that, we're going to eliminate some, but go with the more popular choices from students. That's the conversation we're having. Lisa, anything you would clean up on behalf of that?
No, I think we'll clear it off.
All right. And I have to tell you, there's been some great accomplishment, accomplishments going on. First of all, I want to do a shout out to two of our teachers in the music field. Mr. and Mrs. Fields at the middle school. I don't know if they're here tonight, but maybe since media's here, we can catch it on the news. We have a married team at the middle school, both teaching music, that were just nominated to the Yamaha forty and under list. Very prestigious group. They're featuring and honoring educators that are under forty and for their positive impact in their, their career and their program, specifically in the musical community. So a big shout out to all of them. That's quite, that's quite an accomplishment. Also, a shout out to Jenny Halsey and her staff. We're always talking about, we do not have funds for this or that. And I was at a meeting the other day, and they were talking about how can they offer more summer opportunities for their students? And they wrote a grant to Butler Rural, and they're going to offer some extended learning opportunities for families funded under Butler Rural. But if it wasn't for that initiative of writing the grant, we wouldn't have it. So shout out to EPS. And then another. Two more. Kyle Cook, he is a middle schooler, I believe, that just recently was named the Queen City Classic Chess Tournament. So I'd like to honor and recognize Kyle. And last but not least, Tiffany Schatzel. She joined our best buddies group a year ago and has already been recognized at a state and now international level for the program for her work with special needs children. But specifically, Tiffany learned sign language, and they paired her with another student in another district who is deaf. And through signing, she's gained a buddy and a friendship that I think will carry on for a while. But what a great opportunity and just leadership, just community. But it says a lot for students in Edgewood, so kudos to Tiffany. I'm sure there's far more things out there, so keep sending them our way so we can do shout outs to other people. My last piece is Butler Tech, all board meeting, it's May second. That's always a great event. Encourage our board members to join me. Mark and I were the only ones that went last year. Like to see if we can get more participation for May second. That concludes my agenda items.
So the next item on the agenda is items from board members. Mr. Gabbard in there?
My bad.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
Amy?
Well, I was going to talk about the Yamaha thing, but Kelly stole that. But I just appreciate everybody coming out, the passion that they have for Seven Mile and all the candy schools. So I appreciate you guys thinking of trying to come out and give us your opinions.
Yeah, I want to think the board, the superintendent, treasurer, for everybody working hard, working together, constantly looking at different avenues, ways that we can improve the district along with the board for the voters. You know, it also, you know, this, it's rough at times, seeing everybody come in here like this and so passionate and stuff. But we're constantly looking for ways that we can do better by our schools.
I have to be honest with you, Andrew. I, I, when I went around to the buildings, I said, oh my gosh. My eyes started twitching last night when I heard this, you know? I, I think this may be moving forward very quickly. But you know what? It hit me, and I, I called you probably like forty-eight, seventy-two hours. As painful as this exercise was and is, it's always good to, for us to be on our toes. I'm not saying create angst, but we should always be looking at ways we can do things to save money. Not on the backs of our kids where it's jeopardizing them. But it doesn't hurt to ask questions, and it doesn't hurt to investigate. So as painful as that exercise was, I think, I think it's going to push us further down the road on refining and.
Well, you know, this all started with a, you know, when originally started, you're talking about doing an academy, a virtual academy on Seven Mile. And that's how it all got started. And then once you start looking into that, and I thought I was for, all for the academy until we had our work session. And then you get all the facts and stuff, and you're like, man, that's not a good idea. And the thing is, as a board, we get our information up here. So this is where we get most of our information. So to be able to make a decision, when we bring something up, and then now you've got to do your research. Now you've got to figure out what all it entails. And that's why before the meeting, whenever you get the public participation and stuff, I, I didn't even understand why the closure was on there. I don't, I don't even know who put that on there, but I'm like, is that, was that a, that wasn't a recommendation by who? So when you see that.
I think the perception was that we needed to put it to rest, so we didn't keep pushing it down the road and people guessing.
But.
Weird Russians.
So. But thank you, board, thank you superintendent, thank you treasurer for all you guys being willing to work together.
So I, I just want to say really one thing, and you know, I, I kind of piggybacking on what, what Mr. Pressler and Mr. Fivey just talked about. But I, I do really truly appreciate the passion from the community. But what really touched me more than anything is the fact that we had elected officials from every single municipality in the district that has been involved in these last several meetings talking about the future of not just Seven Mile, but the future of our school district. And, you know, I, I think one of the things that has really resonated with me is it doesn't matter what we do up here on stage, we all be nested with the city of Trenton.
Absolutely.
And we're not nested with the village of Seven Mile, and we're not nested with these townships. None of this is going to work. It takes a village, right? It takes a town, and it takes all of us to do this. So I, I would like to recommend, and I know you do a lot of community engagement stuff, Kelly, but I, I would like to recommend that after we get through graduation, that we find a. but I, I would like to recommend that after we get through graduation, that we find a, a time at some point in June, and bring together a forum of community leaders in these elected positions to sit down and let's talk about what the plans for Trenton are. Let's talk about what the cost of Seven Mile is.
Well, Mark, no, it's interesting, I already have a group, but this is just it. I don't think I've invited the right players to it, because we started, this, the manager of Trenton and the treasurer of Trenton, we meet quarterly, we have breakfast together. We've invited Missy from Seven Mile, I invited a rep from St. Clair and Wayne Township, and I never heard back. I even wondered if I had the right email address. So we already have a forum that started, we need to get more people at the table. Um, and it's the city township leaders to meet quarterly and talk about what's going on. So there's just been four of us at the table, but I think this people can grow, and we need to invite more. So please, if you're official, send me your email, so I know who to even invite. I just went on the sites and said, okay, who's from Wayne Township, who's from St. Clair? And I don't even know if those sites were updated or not, but I never heard back, so, um...
So I'd like to agree with that impact.
Be happy to rotate and make that happen, absolutely.
So I, I would like to look at a time in, in June after graduation, that we get that on the calendar, and we bring St. Clair, and we bring Wayne, we bring Madison Township.
Absolutely.
I think we need to bring Seven Mile and Trenton. Put us all together, get us in a room, and let's, let's talk about the vision of this district looks like, not just from a township, city, or village perspective, but from as a community, 'cause we're, we're gonna continue to spin our wheels, and I, and I think really there, there was a lot of really good points that was brought up in here tonight. It was all done very professional, and to be honest with you, I think all of us, blood pressure was a little high, anxiety was a little high, but do appreciate the passion that y'all brought in here and taking an interest in the lives of these kids, 'cause that's the most important thing. So with that said, that's all I have, any, anything else? All right, so at this time, um, I'd like to look for a motion to move to executive session for the purpose of consideration of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
So move.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Second.
Mr. Gary Gabbard? Mrs. Bowers, would you call roll, please?
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Meerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, it is nine ten.